Okay, I'm gonna call the VP. Thank you everybody for being here this afternoon. Uh, let's go ahead and start with our dedication. Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for your ongoing speaking into our lives and what you're doing upon this planet. We pray tonight, Father, for continued wisdom and grace and favor over the city. We also, Father, at this moment, take an opportunity to pray your continued peace and your grace over the Rodriguez family, over their loss. And we, as a community, Father, we just continue to just claim that over their entire extended family at their moment of loss. Father, with all these things, we thank you for your faith in us, and we thank you for what we will continue to do within the city, in Jesus' name. Amen. Join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible)
Okay, first thing up, any public announcements from Staten?
Good evening, Mayor Pro, Commissioners, Mr. Yerena. The City of Harlingen upcoming events, um, we have a lot coming for the city, and we invite you and the public to attend. Our first one is this weekend, Praise on the Hill, at the Harlingen Soccer Complex. Their headliner is Newsboys, and I have to say, I'm getting a lot of calls from the public wanting to attend this event. Um, October 12th, we have Trashed Off, Police Enforcement Department, at Longsfield Park. On October 13th, Cancer Warriors Fest, at the Longsfield Park. October 19th, uh, we've postponed from October 5th to the 19th for the Zombie Run, in which we have a lot of volunteers for this event, and it's gonna be at the Arroyo Park. October 31st is the City of Harlingen's 4th Annual Halloween in the Park, and the planning is looking good. We have November 2nd for Blues in the Hill, celebrating Texas Music, and Penya Ice, too, for Dallas Cowboys, and that one's also looking good. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to just remind also the community, yeah, I believe it's this next, this upcoming Saturday, uh, the 8th, at the Soccer Complex, it's not up there, but at the Soccer Complex, I believe we have Praise on the Hill, uh, this Saturday, the 8th.
It's a Praise on the Hill.
Shows you how much I paid attention to that. Wait, no, wait, good, at least I got mentioned.
We know you're nervous.
Okay.
Yeah, just noticing, yeah, November 2nd, um, we just attended the Cameron County Historical Association, uh, meeting this Sunday, and they're gonna have the Sesquicentennial for the, uh, Civil War reenactment, and, uh, if you look at all the stripe stores, you'll find all the details posted on the stripe store around town, it's gonna be in Brownsville, the Dance Building, November 2nd.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I'm gonna move to item number 2, Presentation of a Proclamation, proclaiming Treasure Hills Presbyterian 50th Anniversary. I believe we have, uh, Mr. Roger Hughes that's here as a representative. I'm gonna read the proclamation, and it reads, "Whereas Treasure Hills Presbyterian Church will be celebrating its 50th anniversary in worship on October 20th, 2013. And whereas Treasure Hills Presbyterian Church, in its 50 years, has served more than 830 members in Harlingen and beyond, including hundreds of friends and guests who have attended Sunday Worship, and over its 50 years have regained over 107 elders to serve the church. And whereas, over 50 years, more than close to 500 newsletters have been produced informing the parishioners of the scheduled activities and other items of common concerns. Over 2,000, over 2,600 sermons have been conducted, over 168 baptisms, more than 100 weddings, and 130 funerals have been administered at the Treasure Hills Presbyterian Church. And whereas, over 50 years, 2,000 children and youth have been ministered through Vacation Bible School, Youth Groups, and Wednesdays Kids Clubs. And whereas, in 50 years, over $350,000 have been donated to the community, missions, and the wider church ministry. Therefore, I, Danny Castillo, Mayor Pro-Town of the City of Harlingen, Texas, do hereby proclaim November 20th, 2013, as Treasure Hills Presbyterian 50th Anniversary." So we, as all citizens, have joined us in congratulating you and your church community. I know Roger from other, my previous life, and work that he's done for the city, and helping us as, uh, his services as an attorney, but, uh, at this time, I just wanna thank you for what you do as a church community within the City of Harlingen.
Very grateful for the honor. Thank you.
Okay, item number 3, Approval of the Minutes of August 21st, 2013, regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, as written.
Second. Is the motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Next item is the Consent Agenda, item 4A, B, and C. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. Is the motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Item number 5, Discussion Regarding the Rental Rates of the Municipal Auditorium and the Casa de Amistad. City Manager?
Mayor Commissioner, we wanted to provide the Commission with the, uh, some of the current information on the, on the rental rates for the auditorium in Casa de Amistad, and on the, the Assistant City Manager, Gabriel Sanz de.
Move forward with the discussion.
Um, Mayor Pro-Town, currently, the, uh, the average rate for the Casa de Amistad is $1,400. The rate for the auditorium is $1,300. It's, um, one of the lowest rates that we have in the city, but I understand that the Commission may want to lower those amounts, so the item tonight is placed on your agenda. We gave you information regarding the usage for both facilities, uh, some information that we gathered about the rates around town, um, and so, at this point, we're just wanting to get direction from the Council as to what rate, what target rate you'd like to see for both of these facilities.
See, in this, uh, facility, they forgot that facility belonged to the community, and, uh, they may misfigure for their private, uh, facilities around. We don't need that, I mean, we don't want that. What we need is, uh, to figure out, I got over here that a bunch of quinceañera, they, they used to do it before and there, the traditional, and they kill them, because they, they not happen. Before that, it was two years full, and now, it's not. I saw this ending. So what happened? Why they, they, they take it too much? They, they, they charge them too much? And you know what? Why we have to have three people over there working, spending a $4 million, and that's why we going up on the, on the, on the prices? And I don't think so is right.
Father, at this point, would you see to have a number that you may feel comfortable with?
I think the one thing that we need to remember is that, uh, they are, this is an enterprise fund, and, you know, fund, and I just wanna caution the Commission that whatever we do is gonna impact, and so supposedly, it's supposed to be at least a break-even fund, uh, but certainly, we would entertain, uh, you know, any discussion that the Commission wants to have on the rates.
Where do our rates, um, measure up as far as, like you mentioned, breaking even? Are we currently breaking even on, on the cost of operations and upkeep versus what we charge?
No, not right now. We're, um, ever since we had the hurricane, uh, we've gone through periods where we haven't been able to generate sufficient revenue for that facility, um, but we've gotten a lot better at trying to meet that, uh, that deficit, uh, over the years, because of the, uh, the programs that we've been planning. Um, one of the things that we've, because as you know, we don't have any spotlight tiers anymore that we provide. Um, for instance, this year, we're gonna have, uh, the Nutcracker's gonna come in in December, that's, it's what we would consider a spotlight tier, just not being put on by the city. We're simply renting the facility to that organization. Um, there's also a couple other events that the staff is working on, but those are not our events, we just provide the facility as a venue, so we're not putting those on. So we generate revenue simply by allowing the use of the facility or the rental of the facility. Um, what we found that has generated revenue for us is when we have comedy events, um, not necessarily because the event itself generates, uh, revenue, but because we generate proceeds from the ticket sales and adult beverage sales, and that's where we generally tend to make revenue, uh, for the, uh, the auditorium. And one of the things that we've talked about is trying to create a comedy night for the auditorium, and so that's something that staff is working on, also to generate, uh, revenue sales from, from the, uh, the sale of beverages, because obviously, we put on the event, we're not gonna rent it to ourselves, we just provide the venue, but we'll have to have something to actually generate revenue, to provide, uh, some sort of return, um, for our revenue.
On these venues that were canvassed, I know I looked at it, and I was trying to differentiate between the comparisons or the comps, was it, uh, did we go out and sort of survey or check and see what other municipalities charge for their, their venues?
I think the, uh, the Jacob Ryan Auditorium was on there, that used to be a, a venue that was owned by the City of Brownsville, it's now owned by the University of Texas. Um, and there are also the, I think the Brownsville Event Center is there as well. Um, I don't think we were able to get something from the City of McAllen, did?
No, but you got, the Civic Center and McAllen Civic Center are on there.
They are? Okay.
The Civic Center is 3,500. Yes.
You see, in that auditorium, uh, we got an extra charge for the sound system, and they charge $3,000, and man, that, that, that sound system belongs to the city. Why they charging too much money to operate it? When they, I bring a, an expert from McAllen, from the Univision, and he said, the only more they can charge is $500, $600 a night, man, that's ridiculous. That's why we don't have anything on there.
Well, I wanna kind of try to answer that, I wanna make sure, clarify the city does not charge, uh, for that sort of service, that I think that we require the, uh, the person renting that to hire a qualified individual to handle those services. And I think that's a valid point, the city's working and making sure that we maybe open it up to competitive, qualified firms that may be cheaper, and I think the staff's working on a plan for to do that.
Right, it's, it's, I will, the City Manager said, we have a large investment in the sound system, so we like to have professional staff that we know is gonna take care of it, and I know they're, they're maybe somewhat expensive, um, but it's, it's a 20,000 dollar system, Joel?
No, it's more than that, yeah.
And so we, we just wanna make sure that, uh, it'll, it'll maintain its useful life, and so...
I have a couple of questions. Casa del Sol, that's a circular building.
Yes, but that's, that's not part of the discussion tonight. This is just Casa de Amistad and the auditorium, but if you have any questions regarding that, we do.
Okay, just, okay.
They are, it's in tow there, but that's not what, the rates that we wanna talk about possibly adjusting are for the Casa de Amistad and the auditorium.
Well, and the question I wanna make is, or distinction I wanna make, we're actually talking two different issues here. We have quinceañeras and weddings, you know, uh, citizen events that are held at the Casa de Amistad, and then we have the use of the auditorium, which I'm gonna call it a very specialty use. I mean, unless you...
That's correct.
You can't have a rock concert in there and have seating on the floor, but we have seats, and it's very limited, it can be used for church, I think we've used it for, for plays, comedy shows, and that type of thing. When I started asking about this early on, I kept hearing over and over that the Casa de Amistad was very underutilized. It was not being utilized. Nobody was having quinceañeras there, and I, I asked, I said, can I have something for the last 12 months? And that's what y'all provided here. Two questions on this report. You have a quinceañera that has a 3 on it, and a quinceañera that has a 2 on it. They use it for 3 days and 2 days?
Occasionally, someone will come in and want to rent multiple days.
Okay.
The reason they will do that is they'll use 1 day for their setup, and they'll use 1 day to kind of get their stuff out of there. If there's a large rental from one of the rental companies here in town, and they can't get there until the following week, well, then they pay for that time.
So we can consider that 3 events, because that paid for 3 successive days, correct? I mean, for the purpose of what I'm trying to come to here, we, we had about 36 days that we used this auditorium, or the Casa de Amistad, for other than, outside of what I'm gonna call public, and that's what I think Mr. Sanchez, or Commissioner Sanchez is referring to, that people can't afford to go here because of the expense. I, I don't, I mean, looking at 36 events out of 52 weeks, I mean, that's a pretty heavy usage for, for one place on quinceañeras and weddings.
I don't know what you see in that, but I got the, I got the different figures.
I've got different figures, right.
They got the, I got the figure that they prepared to me before I started looking on this. So you've got a new figure, they can figure it out on the, on the computer, they can do it, but I got the, the original figures over here.
I think what Commissioner Yalid referring to is the information that was provided to the Commission for this meeting.
That's, that's in the package?
It's in the package. Uh, that, or it's, when I got the information that Sanchez, uh, Mr. Sanchez had, I went back and I said, guys, this isn't right, you're giving me old information, and I saw in the packet, you did include what I was given a couple of weeks ago. But my point is this, when I started asking about what was going on, uh, it's an enterprise, and I understand that part of what's being done at both the auditorium and the Casa de Amistad, is that the city is loaning out the facility to the school district for its own use for other things.
20 days.
And nothing's being, nothing's being poured back into that enterprise fund, so we have this fictitious number of how much it costs to operate, because we're operating at a dead loss. I mean, if I had a company, and I had a sister store, I would be charging that store, pulling the merchandise, shipping the merchandise to that store. That store has to incur its cost, and I think if the city's gonna use this, or the city's gonna require that that enterprise zone provide the service, there should be some sort of, of money that changes hands, because it isn't fair to say, well, we're not making money, when, maybe we are making money, but we're making it look worse, because the people are being used, and he's not getting reimbursed for it, because he is an enterprise, versus using the Casa de Sol, which he's not an enterprise.
That's why they, they, they go up on the prices, to get the money from the porch and give it to the, to the other people, okay?
Commissioner, the one thing that we will have to do regarding the, um, the school district use, is that set through an ordinance, and through, not an ordinance, but through a joint use agreement.
Correct.
That's set by the Commission and the School Board trustees.
Correct, but I think at some point, fair is fair. I mean, if the city has joined that agreement, that is an enterprise zone, and so the city should have some sort of compensation in its budget to allow that enterprise zone to continue to operate with its funds that it's designed to operate with. The other, but the other thing that, that struck me that I heard from a citizen, is that we, we, and it's an ordinance issue, that's probably, this, I hopefully, if I, if I get out of bounds, somebody can cut me off, but we require a police officer there for these private events, if there's alcohol. In fact, we, we require 3, and I understand that that rate is $105 an hour for all 3. Am I correct?
$35.
$35 an hour times 3.
Yeah.
And if a, I'm gonna call it a mini-convention comes into town, somebody who's gonna have a reception, they're gonna have an awards banquet. Well, a lot of these places like to have a little cocktail hour where everybody warms up as they're walking in, but the only time alcohol will be present will be during that 1 hour, because they had alcohol during that 1 hour. It's a city fund. I'll leave it on. Because, um, they had the, that, for that 1 hour, now if they start at 6 or 5 o'clock in the afternoon and run until 10 at night, they can have a $500 or $600 bill for security. And somewhere, we need to address the distinction between a dance, wedding, quinceañera, where we're gonna have alcohol, bring your own bottle, versus a professional sit-down dinner, a banquet, where we're gonna have some sort of a, a reception hour.
That's not a problem, that's not a problem, because the, the police officers control that, uh, there all the time. I mean, there's no problem. Yeah, I've been seeing this for years. I, I, believe me, I go to the dances because I like to dance, so I never see it any problems.
No, 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 no. No, I'm not, I'm not worried about the dances, I think we need the security. I'm saying, if we're gonna have, right now, we have a lack of places to have meetings in our city.
And Commissioner, Joe, I said issues that you just spoke about, I did have a conversation with the City of Hager, we will be addressing that.
Okay.
In a revision to the ordinance shortly, where if you have an event where you just have like a cocktail hour, as you mentioned, then we won't need securities or any kind of thing.
So taking all of this, what we're talking about in consideration, you know, when we, when we look at what we charge for our auditor, for our, what are we gonna call Casa de Amistad?
To...
An event center.
Event center.
What we charge for our event center, inclusive of those security guards, you know, when we compare this against another venue here in town or in Brownsville, are we comparing the same? And that's what my concern is. You know, I was surprised by the 36, because I saw the same information that was from 2012. It was pretty dismal in 2012, we did not have much, uh, activity in 2012. I'm looking at 2013, and it seems like we're making a turnaround here. I, I don't know if price is the issue, you know, I, there's a lot of different elements here that I'm looking at, and, and so...
Well, I think when you consider the size of the event.
Yes.
Relative to what you pay for, for the square footage, it's really reasonable, and I think that may have had something to do with why we have more usage.
I don't want you to compare Brownsville, McAllen, it belongs to Harlingen. Let's, uh, get focused on Harlingen, the, the community from Harlingen, that's all we...
Well, it looks to me like we're providing already, uh, if you compare the cost to rent the Sierra Event Center or the Monte Bello, $3,000, $4,000 a day, and we're charging, you know, $900 or whatever, we're already sort of the low-cost provider.
Again, sir, that belongs to the community, that facility belongs to Harlingen, those are private, uh, facilities. They can charge whatever they want, but over here, over here, they belong to the community, they belong to Harlingen.
We used it 36 out of 52?
Yes.
Weeks, basically?
Well, uh, not the entire week, just...
I know, I mean, on the weekend, the weekend.
Yes.
Well, actually, it's 52 weekends, but there's 2 days, there's a Friday and a Saturday, the optimum day, of course, is gonna be the Saturday. I mean, I was concerned, because I thought this was on the agenda, because we wanted to raise rates, which I'm not in favor of doing.
And those events on, on outside...
And when I saw how, how reasonable we appear to be compared to the other alternatives, you know, I didn't see a problem, especially when we're busy, 36 out of 52, or whatever the number is. I'm sure if we lower the price, we'd be busier more, because what's gonna happen is you're gonna have people from Brownsville come up here to, to take advantage of our low price, and that just sort of hurts us.
Mr. Juhorn, those events over there outside, they, they, they charge $4,000, $5,000, but they prevent the music, the, the, the food, everything, so that's what you have to check it on that. I've been checking all...
So these prices include more than just the rental of the facility?
Yes. Uh, some of the added value services that we provide, um, they do not have to rent tables and chairs.
No, Joe, he's talking about...
Uh, it varies from facility to facility. At La Sierra, you have to rent the tables and chairs.
But let's clarify...
What does the $3,000 cover?
$3,000, why don't they cover?
That $3,000 covers, La Sierra offers a variety of packages. You are required to use their in-house cable, they are, you are required to allow them to run your concessions, they charge you to turn the air conditioning on, they charge you for the rental of the table and chairs, and they charge you for the rental of linens. None of those things do we charge for. Security is not included in our rental. Tables and chairs are free, as well as events set up, the studio work, wireless internet throughout the facility, so there are a number of, of added value services that we provide.
Does the $3,000 include food and, I mean...
Music, and is that just for the rental of the building, or do they include other, other items?
It is the rental of the building, and then there are ancillary packages that you can use to add up...
But what does the $3,000 include? If I go over there and I want the $3,000 package, just the building?
Just the building.
The building.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
See, do we know, what does it cost the city to rent this out?
Well, that's, that's actually...
I mean, we have electricity, we have, um, a janitor, we have...
Maintenance.
Wearing, tear. And so what's it cost?
That's actually what we came up with this dollar amount, because we wanted to cover...
Which dollar amount?
For, for the auditorium. It doesn't cost us $1,300 in labor to get there, but we figure on the usage, that you're gonna be renting it, you won't be renting it every day, you, you may have 1 or 2 rentals at max a week, so we took that number and came up with this dollar amount that we had for the auditorium with the Casa de Amistad.
Which number are you referring to?
The Casa de Amistad.
The 750, or the 900, or the 1,300, what are you referring to?
What, the, the average, the average cost, uh, to rent the Casa de Amistad for the consumer is gonna be about $1,400. For the term, it'll be about $1,300. That's, now, that's the average cost. When you talk about, uh, the facility, what it costs us to have someone from public buildings there the entire time, um, and all those fees, we tried to factor in, now, what's not included in those numbers are, what Commissioner, uh, Yalid spoke about, was if you have to have a police officer there, that's not included.
Okay, so, so it costs the city roughly $1,300 to unlock the doors, to have the AC on and people there?
No, that's, that's what, we tried to get, uh, a dollar amount and factor that into the usage, uh, based on the number of rentals per week that we anticipated.
But what is the cost?
Oh, that I'm not sure.
I, I have a store, and I go in Monday morning and unlock the door. I have a fixed cost to manage it.
George, do you have a response?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This past year, uh, in 2013, the, we had 179 events in the building. Uh, the total expenses for the operation of the 2 facilities was a little over $330,000. Uh, if you divide that number by the events, that breaks down to $1,853 per event, and that's the cost to the city, not to the citizen, to the city.
Okay, may I, may I ask something? The 330 that it cost you, those were direct costs, or were, did that include salaries of the employees?
That's everything.
No, no, salary of the management, I mean, I'm, I'm, we're talking about, you have to take a crew in there, set it up, clean it up, get it all maintained. If we had no management involved, just, what are the direct costs? What does it cost us to open up the door and use the, the facility?
Commissioner, we'll get that for you, but we'll have to get finance to extrapolate that to...
You follow what I'm coming?
Yes.
My concern is, Joel...
I can have 35.
Okay. My concern, Joel, is this, that it's back to what I had asked earlier, we're, we're using the place, but we're not receiving any income off the place, and so are, do we have a false overhead number? But my whole, you know, if it's $1,500 to operate, it is what it is. My concern is that we're, we're mixing some stuff up, because, yes, we, we have an agreement with the, the school to allow them to use it, we're gonna use it for an event there for the city. You know, we had the, 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 this, 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 this event there. You know, those type of events, we understand that, but I don't want to, to cloud the issue, you know, and, and I'm more focused on the Casa de Amistad than the auditorium, is to me, the auditorium is so specialized, it's difficult to put a number of what it's really valued. That Casa de Amistad is a valuable resource for our community, but, and I'm with Commissioner Sanchez as far as, is it the right price? That's it, for, for the residents and, and non-business. I mean, if it's resident, non-business, for a party, for a quinceañera, that's one thing. If, if a place wants to rent it, a nonprofit wants to rent it, Chamber of Commerce wants to rent it, hey, it's a going rate. This is a competitive market. But I don't, I wanna make sure that we're not hurting our citizens, because we're trying to pull profit to cover all the other expenses that are in that.
What are the other expenses? I mean, it's an enterprise fund, you've gotta have management, you've gotta have air conditioning, you've gotta have maintenance, supplies for those facilities, right?
I'm with you, but I think sometimes, because we use the facility for 5 days, I think, I think, I think the number that came up was like 25 days, the facility was used, where we had to staff it, man it, air condition it, and do the whole thing, they went out for F R E E, was either the school district or the city. And, and that affects that bottom-line number, we, we gotta be able to extrapolate the 2 different numbers.
$61,000 last year.
Okay, so...
I'm looking at $61,000 in free events last year.
In free events?
We incurred over $61,000 in expenses in 2013 from comped events. Something that may very well be impactful, is the school district, this past August, opened up their new performing arts facility.
Correct.
That's going to eliminate 11 free days that the school district gets in that facility, which will free up about $20,000. Uh, the way it shakes out, um... The way it shakes out on our books is the school district took 22 days. Between the auditorium and Casa de Amistad, the city had 11 days in, in that facility. That's a total of 33. That's where that figured, that's 18%. And the $61,000 is 18% of what the total expenses are, and the number of rentals is 18% of what the total, total number of rentals were. So I think that we are looking at apples to apples because you're not looking at an inflated number on one side or the other. It is 18%, both in terms of expenses and in terms of the free events that we provide.
So the 330 and the 179 is absent of the city events and school events?
No, that's total expenses. That's total expenses for the year. That $331,000 is the total expenses.
I'd like to know what it is without those events.
Well, I can, if you let me sit down and do a little math here, I can...
But we don't need it right, right now. I think I don't need it right, right now. I think this is more of a conversation than know where we need to go with it.
This is a discussion I would just kind of...
What I'd, what I'd like to do, because I think we could end up talking about this for three hours and not really get anywhere. Are there any specific questions or homework that we need staff to come back with some more specific answers to, to some of the questions? Is there any direction?
I would like staff to be able to come back to us and say, this is what it actually costs us to have this facility available to one of our citizens. And, and so is our $1,400 rate average? Is, are, are we subsidizing part of it? That, that's what I'd like to know. And, and as I've been trying to get to the bottom of this, I keep running into this, and, and now it's out in the open, everybody can hear what, and if you're in agreement with me, you know, just give staff some direction, but that's where I'm at. I want to make sure that when we're looking at the number, it's a real number.
You've got the fixed cost of operating the facilities, which that's the biggest part of it. If you give a free day to somebody, all you're incurring there is the cost to run the air conditioner and the cost to clean it up. It's, it's the fixed, it's the overhead that's the problem in driving the cost. It's not the fact that we give one free day away, I don't think, or a few free days away.
And it's not, it's not 100% utilized. And that's the other thing, we're, we're paying, you know, what Mr. Sanchez is saying is that we're, we're paying salaries, but it's not being utilized at 100%. So that's, that's why I was asking, what is it without that overhead cost? We're going to have those salaries in the mall. If we never rent it, if we just close the door, we're going to have those salaries. But what does it really cost us to oper, operate it?
Are we, could we operate it without any management?
We couldn't, but still, just so we can get a real number.
I don't, I don't think we could. You have to have somebody there to actually...
But remember, the management number never changes. If we rent it a thousand times or if we rent it one time, it's a, it's a fixed cost. So I'd like to know what that number is without that management.
And another thing, why they got two different boards? It's kind of confused. One board for the Casa de Amistad and the, and another one for that facility over there.
There's only one board for the auditorium. Casa de Amistad doesn't have a board.
Well, there's the auditorium and the...
And the museum.
The museum.
But I, I found out because once it's enterprise, once it's not an enterprise, we have to have them separate.
Well, we'll get over to this and then we'll come back with some more information. Did you want this on for the next meeting or?
What's, what's the wishes of the commission? Do we want an extra item coming back or do we want another?
Why don't the two of them get together with staff and figure out what it is they want to look at and make sure, and when you have that, bring it back.
Since I got these new numbers, my eyes have been open and I've been less aggressive about looking at the rate more like, you know, where are we really?
So staff's pretty clear on what the next step will be.
All right, so we'll get together with commissioners.
All I want is to stop this and, and lower down the rate to the, to the community. They charge more to the people that come from Brownsville, MacGale, whatever, it's fine with me. It's all right. Lower, they charge less for the community because that facility belongs to Harlingen and it belongs to the community.
Okay, but just, we're going to be out most of next week?
Yes.
So maybe the week after that we'll get together with some information for you. Okay, super, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number six. Consider take action to approve or reject the fire protection service contracts for the cities of Combs, Duena and Palm Valley.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. On your pack, as you'll have the signed contracts from all three cities, we did receive the city of Combs this afternoon. It ultimately shows a slight revenue increase due to the increase in the, in the contract. So if you have any questions, not staff recommends approval.
Yeah, so they're going to pay us X dollars and we're going to provide X services. Do we make money? Do we break even or do we lose money?
Depends how you look at it, sir, because we do have, for example, all these rates are, are set through tax, they're tax revenues. Okay, and depends whether you look at Combs or you look at Palm Valley, the rates are going to be, the, what we're taking is, is slightly higher from one city to the next. But if you look at the calls, depending on how many calls we have per year, okay, Palm Valley, sometimes it's slightly, slightly less than the city of Primera. But in all, we are providing just fire service. For example, grass fires, house fires, electrical poles on fire. We do not provide medical services like we do for the city.
How is the amount determined? You know, when we, you have the outside districts that you serve, the zones, the county collects a 10 cent per hundred fee, and then they divvy that up based on how many calls each fire department has out into those areas, right? Well, how do we decide what Combs is going to pay and what Palm Valley is going to pay?
It's based on a percentage of their tax collection. Am I correct? Phenomenal mistake.
Is it the same percentage for all three?
Yes, sir.
I think what you're referring to is that if each city is certified in that taxable value, is that what?
It's 10 cents for a $100 budget.
Right, so it's 10 cents, just like it is outside in the camp for the fire, whatever they call that zone.
The fire district?
The fire district. They collect, if you live out in the country, you have a 10 cent tax on your, on your property, and it goes back to the city that covers that area minus a little bit of administrative charge that the county gets, right?
Honestly, I don't have that answer for you, sir, but it's not based the same.
I believe that's basically correct, though. It's 10, 10 cents based on, about taxable evaluation.
In a more general sense, the whole principle is, is based by statute and it's governed by a standard. It's not something that you determine on, or the city of Harlingen determines on its own. It's something that's already established by statute.
I think 10 cents is the max.
It's the max, yes, it is the max.
And we do have fixed costs associated with, with the fire department, so if we lose this revenue, then we'll be losing our source of revenue.
And there was lack increase in the revenue.
To me, this looks just like the one we just did with the county, just a debt of...
This is pretty standard. This is pretty standard and we, I'd move approval.
I second.
There's a, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All of the favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Thank you. Item number seven, also with the fire department, consider take action to approve or reject the renewed fire protection contract with Cameron County Emergency Services District Number One for fiscal year 2013-14.
And so also in your pack, as you will see the summary on revenues, and for this coming year, we will be collecting a slight increase in revenues from the county.
And that, that's what we just covered, it's based the same way.
Yes, sir. The only difference is that with, with the county, it's based on, on the average for the calls and divided between all the cities that participate in them.
Right. That's what I mean, they, they take a little off the top, I think.
Yes, sir. Make the motion, we...
Second.
Approve this.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. We are on eight now, right?
Yes, sir, correct.
Number eight, item number eight, consider take action to approve a resolution to update the city of Harlingen's basic emergency management plan.
This is a plan that not changed other than addition of some names and phone numbers to the plan.
It's just a standard update.
Yeah, no, no updates other than, than just phone numbers. So staff recommends approval.
There any questions? If not, then appear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Thank you very much. Move on to item number nine. Consider take action to approve the Keep Harlingen Beautiful budget for fiscal year Mr. Nick?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. Proud to present the budget for our upcoming year. And this year looks like a building year for us as we continue to move on from, from the hole that we had created last year. A quick reminder what our mission statement is for Harlingen Proud. It is to educate the community about and promote recycling and beautification and encourage a clean environment. I think we, every year, we've taken all those tasks and met our mission year after year, especially with John O'Villas coming on board a couple of years ago. Our recycling center has, has been more efficient, has been run much, much better, and we're able to generate a whole lot more revenue than we were a few years ago. Quickly here, our budget, we broke it down into these parts here. Beautification projects, which, there's a laundry list of those over the years that we've, that we've participated in, and we definitely have appreciated your support in those events and your, your labor at those events over the weekends. Of the special events that we're, we're having, we anticipate some new projects, kind of refocusing some of our efforts and in our mission statement. We're also, year after year, hand out awards to the school district, to certain schools who participate in our programs. And of course, we support recycling center with some supplies. And we need to do a little marketing to help get the word about the importance of recycling in Harlingen. We do have a labor expense, our executive director. So we'll go through this quickly here. The track, the beautification projects we're focusing on this next coming year is our trash bash, and we're actually going to revamp that and call it litter bash, and we're going to do a two-hour blitzkrieg, if you will, on the litter on our streets, trying to get more participation because it used to be a four-hour event, and that seemed to kind of drag on. And so we're going to shorten it and mark it a little bit different and hopefully get more people out. One great beautification project is ongoing and will continue to go ongoing for a little bit, for a couple more years with the canal faces. And we first targeted the canals on our major thoroughfares, and you'll see them up on Harrison Tyler, on 77, on, on F Street, and on Lincoln. And so we've taken the approach of beautifying those, working the irrigation districts, some of them have irrigation and some are zero scape, that have some type of plants that need very little water to them. Of course, disobedience, those are products we take on. Clean neighborhood programs, things that we're definitely going to team up with the city. City has now done a monthly cleanup neighborhood program. Harlingen Proud used to do that, five neighborhoods throughout the course of a year. And so we look forward to partnering with the city again on those and supplying more volunteers and hopefully cover a bigger track in the monthly efforts. And the walking trail is something that we're definitely working closely with Parks and Rec on. I'll see how we can help continue to beautify that. It's that new trail that's gone on 25th Street all the way down to TSTC. So we've had meetings with Paul and Jeff and, and been working with Dan on seeing what we can do to, to put more trees, to help beautify that trail, to make it something that is very enjoyable for our citizens to use. Special events, we have RDA events, and the state of Texas has decided to move RDA from April, which is too darn hot to plant anything, up to November, November. And so we're going to, we're going to work with the state and follow their timeline on that. November's a better planting time, better survivability rate, and so we're going to move our RDA event to November as well. E-waste event was something we had, and a couple of y'all participated in that greatly. Appreciate you doing that. It was a successful event, I know Dan has reported on that. And for our first at bat, it was great. We processed 192 cars in four hours. It was a well-oiled machine, if I do say so myself. So we're anticipating to do one in April as well. I think the community response was very positive and kept hearing over and over again. I just, I've been holding on to this stuff for five years, 10 years, I didn't know what to do with it. And so thank you so much for having this, and I think it was a good reflection on the city for being proactive in that regard. TSTC is a great partner of ours. Last year, the Dixieland project was a huge project for, for Keep Harlingen Beautiful. That was about a $28,000 plant job that we did out there. And so I know Paul has some great pictures of it before and what it looks like today. If you drive by Dixieland by the Bass Proshops, you'll see how well it's grown and bloomed. And so we have a lot of yellows and reds and purples out there along with these wild olive trees. And so we're working with TSTC this October. We're not going to be able to do something as big as we did last year, but this year we're going to look at doing some improvements to some public spaces that we have at our recycling center, because that's our, our moneymakers, and we want to make it look as pleasing to the public as possible. And then we have some maintenance projects that we want to utilize these students. And so once again, TSTC has been a great partner in that regard. As I mentioned, we have some new, new projects that we're looking out for to be more, have more outreach with the Harlingen School District. We've already had several meetings over the course of the summer with their facilities, people, to get them to recycle more of their white paper and more of their cardboard. That's really where our moneymakers have been at, our recycling center. So that's an ongoing, as I mentioned, the litter bash, transforming trash bash into litter bash and really focusing on that litter, kind of incorporate the Don't Mess with Texas as well, and making some of this a little bit more fun, more intense, and kind of get in, get out, go on with your life and kind of thing. We, our school district contests, we're going to divide that up into big campuses and little campuses, because it's not really fair for, for example, like Savala Elementary to compete against Stewart Place. Stewart Place has 800 kids, Savala has about 300 and so on. So we're, we're going to divide that up a little bit and create two different categories and have two places, two first-place winners based upon school size. And we're using the UIL guidelines to, to help us with that. New projects, though, we've never, ever in the history of Keep Harlingen Beautiful had sponsors. It's something that we want to look at because of the different activities that we want to participate in more and more, some of the initiatives that we want to incorporate within the parks. I think there's a great opportunity to look to the business community to have some sponsorships, like some great local banks. We have a RDA event as well, and that's something that we want to grow and build to where it's, it's something that, over the course of a year or so, we have thousands of people participate. Awards, once again, to hit on this a little bit more, we do a phone book recycling, and we do offer $600 reward to the overall, the first, second, and third. Once again, it's just to create awareness and to get kids to kind of get in the habit a little bit of recycling. And we, tons of phone books every year that we've kept out.
It might be easier with phone books if we just have the people that make them just drop them straight off at your place rather than...
We're going to have a contest. We contacted them about that already. We sent them a link to Google. Elementary school contest, this is a new one for us, and this is really the total, we started actually yesterday, October, and we're going to run that through the end of April, and that's a total collection. And so we're, we're collecting those from the schools, we're going to weigh those on a, on a regular basis, and John, the recycling coordinator, is going to keep track of those, and at the end of the year, we're going to hand out rewards to those students. As I mentioned, recycling center, just to give you an idea, we support recycling center with about $5,000 worth of these type of materials. And so John, the recycling coordinator, contacts us and says, hey, I need more baling wire. And when he needs more baling wire, that means he's abundantly more, that means we're processing more, and that's a good thing, so we like that. And it's a great partnership that we have with, with recycling center. Marketing, we feel like we need to do a little bit more to educate the community on recycling center, and it took us a survey back in August, we did two Saturdays in a row, and what we found out first and foremost is, most people don't realize that when you're recycling Harlingen, you're doing two things positively, you're keeping that stuff out of the landfill, but secondly, you're helping Harlingen Proud to meet its mission. Because we use those funds, as you all know, to, to do our projects and meet our goals year after year. And so most people, when we informed them that, they, kind of a light bulb flicked off, like, wow, I'm doing something extra good. And so we're going to promote that a little bit more to get that message out, and I think this year we'll have the funds available to do that a little more than we have in the past. past. One aspect, too, is our labor cost. We historically always had a part-time executive director, and the board decided to move that into a full-time position and hire someone that was able to be there more often and also develop these new programs and manage these new programs very well. And so we hired Melissa Boykin, who's right here. She's well-known in the business community, and so we're very excited. She's been with us since May, and made a lot of headway in a short period of time. And so this 2013, 2014 is going to continue to build on what we've been doing the past couple of months, and I'm sure 2014, 2015 is going to be a great year for Harlingen Proud. So our overall revenue comes $75,000, we make a little bit of interest, and our expenses are $75,000. Once again, we want to thank the city. We simply could not even remotely do what we do without the continued support from Dan Serna, who's just always the solutions man for us, and we really appreciate Dan and everything that he does for us, day in and day out. John O'Loos, our recycling coordinator, does a tremendous job running that thing very smoothly, and John is always looking at ways to help improve the efficiencies so that we can generate more funds. Paul and Jeff out of Parks are great to work with when we talk about the beautification projects, how we can support each other, work with each other, and rarely do we get a, hmm, I don't think that's going to happen. We always find a solution. And then, of course, LDA Corps Enforcement, they get a lot of heat for trying to keep our city beautiful, a lot of nasty emails, phone calls, arguments, and so we really appreciate the cooperation and do that help us keep Harlingen beautiful. With that, I'll take some questions.
I've got two questions.
Yes, sir.
There is three.
Okay.
First one is, you guys are doing a great job, it's beautiful. I mean, the second one is, where'd you make the promotion, and where'd you make the promotion for that Harlingen Proud?
You mean talking about our marketing?
Yeah.
Well, that's proposed for the next year, and we, in our survey, we also took kind of demographic information, so we know basically who's recycling. And as you all bring up business models, we know that it's always easier to do business with people that do business with you than trying to gain new customers. So we're going to focus on the people that recycle and try to have them recycle more and educate them on the broad spectrum of products that we really do take, and also help ask them to become more advocates for us, to get that one family member, that one friend, to then to recycle. And that's what would be our marketing focus this next year, is to use the people that... And so with that said, probably trying to utilize maybe a very precise direct mail drop and/or signage within our facility alone is one marketing aspect we're going to do. And then I think some possibly newspaper ads because of the demographic that the newspaper delivers at this point.
And the territory is hard to control to make the money to come out even like that. I can't surprise with that.
Well, it's a budget, and Melissa had definitely ordered the budget, and I think this is the finest budget we've had in a long time, and it's very precise, and so we left ourselves some room to grow within that.
Is there any opportunity to increase the types of plastics or glass or anything that can be recycled? Is there a market for it from down here?
That's the key part. There always has to be a market.
It's supply and demand.
Right, supply and demand. And this past month, we did very well, we processed a lot. And if there's an opportunity to recycle the different types of plastics, for example, just the plastic on your water bottles is different from the water bottle itself, that plastic, we're not able to recycle at this point. But we do take a whole lot of things, we really do. We even take styrofoam, which is uncommon.
And that's fairly new for you, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Your recycling styrofoam that's new, I understand you're also doing the electronics, doing computers year-round now?
We're taking electronics year-round, all the time, and the reason why we had the e-waste event was simply just to create awareness, create an event, create a little buzz. And we had a write-up in the newspaper the day before, we had a write-up in the newspaper the day after, which is all good, it's good and bold for the city. Channel Four was out there, recorded us out there as well, so that's what we wanted to get to work out. We were on K-Tex, we were on Model Four, and their morning shows promoting the event, promoting Harlingen, and so we got a positive response, as I mentioned earlier.
I did want to say, echo what Commissioner Sanchez had stated earlier, one of his first questions was, a big thank you to you and your board. Do you have some of your board members that are here?
No, no, not anymore, but we have some former, Ruthie, and Juan, my spouse.
I know everybody that's in that area and many other people here that have been here, including city staff and other citizens here, and others that are not here today but have been involved in Harlingen Proud over the years. I mean, I appreciate everything you guys do, and I'd say I'm sure that's a sentiment of the whole commission. We appreciate what you all do, and I know that's been a hard task, is trying to get people to actually get out there and sweat a little bit and pick up trash and help make our city beautiful.
Sure, I think that's why we're kind of revamping what we're trying to do, and I think the litter bash is one of those understanding the conditions out, the conditions out there and revitalizing that thing and see if we can make it more successful.
Any other questions?
But I'd like to make a motion that we approve their budget. Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Nick.
Good job.
Item number 10, consider or take action to accept, reject bids, and award contract for Phase Four of the Buchanan Hayes and M Street Drainage Improvements Project under bid number 2013-14.
Good evening, Commissioner Proteman, Mayor Proteman, Commissioners. As approved in the one-year action plan for the CDBG Black Brand Funds, the City of Harlingen will be constructing a storm sewer project approximately 641 meter feet and along M Street from Mitchell Street to Fillmore Street. After review of the bids and completion of reference checks, Engineering and CDBG recommend Phase Four of the Buchanan Hayes and M Street Drainage Improvements to be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, GP7 Construction, in the amount of $179,305.50. Staff members approve.
I have just one question on the contract. I mean, I know in the past, there's been isolated incidents where we've had some issues with the timeliness as far as the completion of the work. Has that been sort of factored into this, just to make sure that this gets done within a reasonable amount of time?
Yes, currently JP7 is working on a project, and they're about 85, 90% complete, and once they complete that, they will be doing this project.
There is a section that addresses liquidated damages.
Yes, we have $1,000.
...today for any delay in completing the project on time. And the contractor that got the lowest bid on this project is also the one that's working on Phase Three, and Phase Three and Phase Four are connected to one another.
That wasn't me and my question, we're already utilizing them, so the done and bad Brad Street question has already been done.
It's just a continuation of the same lines, it's just different page.
So they're familiar with what's going on?
Yes.
Make a motion that we approve. Second. Motion, this is second. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side.
Thank you.
Item number 11, board appointments? Any?
No.
No board appointments?
I think we're going to continue, I'm going to pick up where Commissioner Sanchez left off. You know, he and I are having a hard time filling somebody for the Community Development Advisory Board. It's a very specialized appointment, somebody has to be from that area, live in the area. But the real key is they have to be interested in working with that. This is a public place, if there's somebody out there that would like to get involved with the city, neither District Four or District Five would like to point someone.
Okay. We have some executive session items, but before going to that, because there is no action items on those executive session items, I'm going to skip that for right now, go to item number three, citizen communication.
Your name, service, mayor, protein?
Mr. Villarreal, could you begin, just state your name and your address for the record?
My name is Ramiro Villarreal. I live at Route One, Box 27, corner Primera Road, Expressway 77 North. I was here about three meetings back, and I was wanting to read this letter that was cut, and I was taking too much time. And if it's possible, I'd like to read it. And it says, "My name is Ramiro Villarreal. I reside at the named park pertaining to this matter. As to why I'm here, I, as a proprietor of this mobile home and recreation vehicles, Big Sky, have had the opportunity to meet a few, three police officers and three code enforcement officers at my property. They showed up at the park unannounced on Wednesday, September 11th of this year. They called me on the phone to let me know they were there, and my mother, who is 83 years of age, explained to them that I was not in the park at the time they arrived, and tried to explain to them that she wished, asking them to wait for me. They proceeded to do as they wished without my presence. Is this how the city and how the city trains its employees to do business with all city residents? Is it not by law that they have to respect property owner's rights, or is it, I will do whatever I want to do or wish to do with your city employees? Do they not have laws they have to abide by? My mother does not speak... My mother does not talk English very well, so to their advantage, they proceeded to do as they wished. I am tired, I'm very poor for me..."
Do you have much to go, sir, on your letter? Do you have much to go on your letter?
I have this much and a little bit. May I proceed, sir?
Give you another minute, sir, and my understanding is you have already, have you already tendered that letter to our city manager?
I gave each one of you, yes, sir.
He weren't here, I don't think.
But I didn't get a chance to read it to you all.
Okay, and we can't really address this as far as respond to your issue, since it's not on the agenda as an item, but I can assure you, and I believe even up to this point, the city manager and staff have met with you, so if there's a continued need to meet with them, we will direct staff to meet with you and cover the issues identified in your letter.
Thank you, sir.
We do appreciate you coming up and bringing that to our attention.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anybody else?
Next, we have Guadalupe Villarreal. St. Andrews, Route One, Box 27, Harlingen.
I need to get her to answer the question. I don't hear very well. Buenos dias.
Good evening.
I'm Guadalupe Villarreal.
My name is Guadalupe Villarreal.
Ella is Ramiro Villarreal, my daughter.
The gentleman that just spoke is Ramiro Villarreal, my son.
Yo quiero saber que es lo que pasa, porque nomás a él están piqui, piqui, piqui.
I want to know why they are targeting just him?
Le quitaron hasta el tanque del garage.
They took away the garbage container?
La gente no tiene de tirar la basura.
The people at the mobile home park do not have a place to throw the trash?
Porque.
Why?
Ellos no tenían derecho de quitarles los tanques.
They did not have authority to take the containers away?
Porque los está pagando.
Because he was paying them?
Otra cosa.
Another thing?
Cuando van allí, van montón de avispas. Van empleados aquí, empleados acá, empleados acá. Como cuando van al nopal, a empagar, a caer allí, así nada ellos. No tienen que...
When they show up, they usually show up with teams like the Thwama Bees, and she said that they don't have to.
No es matón, no es rojón.
He is not a criminal?
Él, cuando fueron allí, una señora me dijo, porque estaba en la cina. Yo fui a ver, a ver qué querían.
When they showed up, there was a lady there?
Entonces, me dice la señora, me puede enseñar ahí donde el cuarto, ver qué tiene? Le dije, yo iba a ir, le dije, no, tengo que esperar a mi hijo, porque es el dueño.
The lady asked if I could show her around, and I said no, because I wanted to wait for the owner, which is my son.
Pero ella ya se había metido.
But she had already gotten in the property.
Cuando fuimos a hablar con mi hijo, le dice, tiene llave el cuarto?
When we went to talk to my son, he asked me if the room was locked.
Le digo, yo, cómo se metió? Si tenía llave.
And I asked him, how did they get in if it was locked?
No tenía que andar metiéndose en lo que no le quedaba.
They were not supposed to get in if it was locked?
Porque no le gustaría que uno fuera a su casa de a meterse.
How would she like that if we went and got into a room that's hers and then it was locked?
Mrs. Villarreal, if I could just state...
Que ya no dejen en paz, le quitaron los tanques, hay que quedar. Hay que quedar.
She wishes that they just leave him alone, and they've already taken the containers.
Thank you, Mrs. Villarreal.
Gracias por el servicio, que dejan tan.
Thank you for the authority that you provide.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other individuals for...
That is all.
We'll go on to item number 12, close executive session on the following items, 12A pursuant to Chapter 551. The Local Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with city attorney to seek legal advice regarding Charles E. Lee versus City of Harlingen. Civil Action Number B10CB233 in the United States District Court for Southern District of Texas. Item 12B pursuant to Chapter 551, Local Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with city attorney to seek legal advice regarding the lease agreement between the City of Harlingen and the White Wings Baseball Club for the use of the baseball stadium known as Harlingen Field. And B C pursuant to Chapter 551, Local Government Code, Section 551.087 and 551.071, regarding commercial and financial information for a business prospect with which the city commission is conducting economic development negotiations and/or to discuss, deliberate or deliberate financial or other incentives for the business project, prospect known as EZ Rider, and to seek legal advice from the city attorney regarding the subject matter. So your motion to go into...
Make a motion. Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going into executive session, there are no action items after that, so you all stay here.